Gotta get serious.
Okay, here we go. Good evening, welcome to the regular meeting of the Albion City Council Tuesday, September 5th, 2017. If you have a cellphone, I'd ask that you turn it on silence. I call this meeting to order and we will begin with a moment of silence. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Domingue, will you please call it a roll?
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Reed?
Brown?
Here.
Lawler?
Here.
Spicer?
Here.
French?
Here.
And Mayor Brown?
Here. Are there any council comments this evening? Councilmembers Brown and Lawler?
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to announce tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the Albion District Library, Precinct 3 will be hosting a meeting to discuss the potential of medical marijuana facilities coming into the city. The meeting will be in the Naomi Lane Room, 6:00 PM tomorrow.
Thank you.
All are invited, even if you don't live in Precinct 3, you can make it come out.
Councilmember Lawler?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make two quick announcements. On September 16th, there will be, Double Vision will be hosting a comedy show at the Marshall Opportunity School from 7:00 to 9:00. The tickets are $10. And we'll also be doing roller skating under the pavilion on the 16th of September. The cost is $5. So please bring your children out to roller skate in Victory Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes?
Yes, I would like to thank the Albion Chamber of Commerce, the Albion Community Foundation, and Building Blocks of Kalamazoo for our north west neighborhood watch dumpster drive cleanup. It went very well. I think our city manager who was in reserve in case things got a little financial, it was a total success. I also want to show you this here. This is a drug test kit. I'm on probation, so I took my drug test today. I passed. However, I complained that having been a former substance abuse counselor, that these were defective testers. He said I passed and I asked, could I take it with me? And they said, hey, why? I said, because our doctor thinks. Right now it's showing that I would have had heroin in my system. And I had, the reason I'm doing this, because I had been receiving complaints from people, hey, these testing systems at the probation everything are showing that blah, 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 that I'm dirty or not. So I myself took a test today. I'm a cocaine user, a lot of cocaine, but anyway, bottom line is, I don't do heroin no more. So the thing of it is, we must ask for different testers from our Calhoun County Commissioners. It's on live TV saying, I could have been a child today. But that's it. I'm just keeping it real. Thank you.
Councilmembers French and Reed?
This morning I was fortunate enough to be out to Harrington School when the kids came to school with the 100 men that were lined up out there who were welcoming the kids to the, to the school. And it was very, it was nice. It was, it was impressive. It was, it was wonderful. I just happen to say that there was 100 men, but it should have been 100 women too, because all of the first school teachers were women. But anyway, I just want to congratulate all of those men who showed up out there this morning to start our kids off on a positive school year.
Councilmember French?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilman Reed. I was going to make comment about the things going on at Harrington School this morning. I especially want to thank the men's sports teams at Albion College who helped participate and showed up dressed at a very early hour. Many of them probably had not been up that early in a very long time, so they got a good start. I also want to report that the college's head count happened on Friday of last week. We welcomed 567 new students and transfer students to Albion this year. We, 40% of those new enrollees are coming from diverse backgrounds. The total number of students that we have is in the 1,560 or so students, which is 130 more than we had last year. So we're coming back in terms of enrollment and in terms of our diversity as well. So I just wanted to report that. I also wanted to thank Councilman Brown for, for having this first of a few, I think, precinct meetings on the medical marijuana issue, and I encourage everybody from my precinct as well to attend that meeting.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from council this evening? Seeing none, public comment. Persons addressing that the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only, and we ask that you would comment for no long, no longer than three minutes and observe proper decorum. And please give your name and address.
Mary Norton, 406 Fitch Street. I was just wondering, you're going to pass this ordinance tonight, and I was wondering why it hadn't been in the paper. You're supposed to have it in the paper two times before you actually pass it. I checked with the paper and they said they had no record of it.
Can, can you just, which ordinance are you talking about?
It's 2017-06. It's just the second reading.
Okay.
We do two readings and then we, then it goes until 50 days after that.
Okay. So, yeah, I think we're, the city's applying to what it needs to do. Do you want to state that, Lawrence?
Sure. Just the way that we, when we pass ordinances, it's, it's right, it's, we do two readings at the city council. After it's passed by the city council, we publish it, and if an ordinance becomes effective 30 days after its publication.
So there's basically two readings, not two postings?
Right. There's two readings, not two publications. It's published after the second reading.
Thank you. Are there any further comments on the agenda this evening?
We'll talk about it.
Yeah, we're, yeah, basically, this is just the, the moment when anyone in the public can comment on any of the iss, any of the things listed on the agenda. And if there's something you want to discuss that's not on the agenda, then there's a period for that later in the, in the meeting. Is it a?
Is it about something on the agenda?
Yeah. Yeah. But there will be a moment. Yeah. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no further public comment, we'll move on to consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes for August 21st. Approval of special session minutes, August 23rd. Approval of study session minutes, August 28th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Items for individual discussion. Item A, request approval, second reading ordinance number 2017-06 to amend ordinance 22-181 regarding sidewalk cafes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Manager Mitchell?
Thank you. Mayor and council, if you recall, when we had the application for the pop-up restaurant, we discovered that our current ordinance is only allowed for the outdoor seating for the cafes within the Superior Street. So what this ordinance does is allow for those outdoor eating establishments to be within the downtown district.
Councilmember Reed?
I had a question that I was asking before our meeting started was, does this include alcohol or just food?
Your mind. Thank you.
My question was, does this consider, is this just for alcohol or, I mean, is this just for food or for alcohol and food?
Yes, my understanding, this would be specific to outdoor eating, and I would defer to our attorney relative to the liquor license.
My, well, the way I would interpret it is, is they can, all the city is authorizing is, is that the establishment can operate its eatery on the sidewalk. Now, if they want to serve alcohol outside, and they've already got an existing liquor license, they would have to comply with whatever the Michigan Liquor Control Commission's requirements are for outdoor liquor service. So assuming they meet those requirements, they could in turn do that. They would have to, you know, have an enclosed area, which is my understanding that the state requires. But really, what we're authorizing is their ability to operate outside. For them to operate liquor outside, they would need that additional state approval.
So basically, if someone wants to do this, they'll have the, the permit for food from us, and then they'd have to get another license from the state?
Well, all we're saying is that they can operate their business on, on the sidewalk. If they want to operate, if, for example, if a business operating in town already has a liquor license, if they want to serve alcohol outside, we're allowing them to operate outside, but they have to meet the state requirements for the service of alcohol outside. So we're, so we're not, we don't give that approval to state of us.
I would like to see what states is approving as outside. If it's, if it's, I was studying some things, because I've been looking up information on outside eating or outside drinking, whatever. If, if it, if it, there are, there were some that showed where it was, you could see over it. And then there was another one that showed where there was a top part where you couldn't see over. I'd like to know what ours is going to be like.
So you're discussing the rules regarding having it enclosed, or?
I mean, off the top of my head, I can tell you, based on my experience with the Liquor Control Commission, what they require is that it has to be an enclosed area. It can't, usually it can't be, if they're serving alcohol, it can't be accessible from the sidewalk. You usually have to go into the business and come out into the enclosed area to prevent minors and other persons from just kind of going in.
So really, there's, there's not going to be, because when I think about sidewalk, I guess, food selling, I think of the festival, right? You know, people have little tents and things like that. That's not something that would fall, that wouldn't meet the standards of probably a liquor license for outdoors.
Right. Right. I mean, what, I mean, and, and there are very, there's a limited number of businesses that operate in the city right now that have a license for liquor sales, and I don't believe any of them are for outdoor liquor sales. But like I said, they would have to get permission from the Liquor Control Commission to take that stuff, which my understanding is they would, we would also have to give our input on.
Okay.
But not as part of this ordinance.
Food trucks?
Not this ordinance. That's a separate, food trucks would be a separate thing. That is something that's becoming more popular, and I can actually, I mean, if that's something you're interested in regulating, I can bring you some sample ordinances for how other municipalities are regulating.
Okay. Okay. But to get back to council, councilmember Reed's question, basically, they're probably not, because of the state criteria for enclosure, is probably not going to be, that's probably not going to end up happening if you're having an event on the sidewalk. That's.
Right. I mean, I don't want to speculate about what, what businesses may or may not do. All I can say is, what, what you have before you tonight is whether or not to authorize businesses that engage in, like restaurants, you're allowing them to operate on sidewalks if they apply for the appropriate permit. If they want, if they're a business that sells alcohol as part of their business, they would have to get state approval to do that. We're not, we're not giving them the approval to do that. We're just giving them the approval to operate their already existing business.
So, so what, what, hypothetically, what could happen is, let's say you had a establishment that, that served alcohol, and they, we approved this, and they put up kind of mobile, you know, like little fencing, could be plastic or metal, and they kind of enclose the exterior or the kind of part of the sidewalk in front of the business and put up kind of lawn tables. And that, that probably could meet the criteria for.
They would have to get Liquor Control Commission's approval, and to get that approval, I believe, and I would defer to the chief, I believe they'd have to have the Public Safety Department's approval. And off the top of my head, I think they might need to get the city's input on it, but I know usually the chief of public safety has to sign off on, on whether or not it's, you know, they're meeting certain requirements.
Okay, that's fine. As long as it was food, all right. I am, I just did not want to get into something agreeing that open liquor would be out in public where our young people would be exposed to it. Not, not them drinking it, but them even seeing it being
I think, yeah, I think, I think we can't, if we do it, based on what I'm hearing, that is a possibility. That is a possibility. Because right now, if we don't do it, you can't go on the sidewalk. But then if we do, food will be allowed, but then it also gives the opportunity for that establishment or establishments to.
Seek the additional answer from the state.
So, yeah. So we're not, we're not authorizing it, but we're opening, we're providing a means.
You're just allowing the, the business to operate on the sidewalk is all you're doing.
So, are there any other, are there any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Seeing no other questions, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Reed?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item B, request approval resolution number 2017-35, resolution of the City of Albion adopting, adopting the finalized Calhoun County Hazard Mitigation Plan, providing an effective date and other purposes. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Dr. Mitchell, City Manager Mitchell.
Thank you. Mayor and council, as we are witnessing what's transpiring in Texas and looks like onset in Florida, we understand the need for coordinated responses to disastrous, disastrous situations. So what this is, is the Hazard Mitigation Plan for Calhoun County with the cooperation with some of the local communities, including Albion. So it includes four phases, the mitigation, preparedness, response, and recovery, and who's in charge of what and the contact individuals. And it's really required in order to seek the funding from the federal government should an emergency occur. This is the actual plan for Calhoun County, including the City of Albion.
So moved.
Well, it's already been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Any questions? Okay. Okay, seeing no discussion, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item C, request approval number, a resolution number 2017-37, a resolution to approve additional wastewater treatment plant improvements. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved and supported. See?
Alan Gepfels?
Yes, is here. If you just provide like a brief summary for viewing of.
Yeah, I can give you a brief summary. We met with the council last week to give a detailed explanation of the issue that's occurring at the wastewater treatment plant. There's a design, or there's a construction project that's going on there. Policeman Vandenbrink was the designer on that project. And the concern is, there are two large primary clarifier, concrete tanks that are in the ground that have equipment in them that's going to be removed as part of this project. What we found during the construction phase of the project was that the groundwater levels are very high around these tanks. And if they were just drained, that they need to be completely drained. They're about 10-foot deep tanks. If they're completely drained, there's a concern that you would hurt the, break the, the bottom of the concrete tanks. And so there, there needs to be dewatering done around these tanks before the equipment is taken out. And most of the change order is for that dewatering to occur during construction, which will happen in the, hopefully later on this month.
Are there any questions from council? I think one thing that you mentioned during the study session is that, that your firm updated the, I guess, plant manual?
The O and M manuals, yes.
Yes. So is, was it like a complete update, or just for certain parts, or?
It was, you know, parts of it, parts of it were still valid.
Okay.
So we took those and moved those along and basically copied those and then updated the parts that needed to be updated. And this would obviously be, be one of the parts that needs to be known to future operators and current.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion from council? So I will say, if you can remind us of how much it is, and then what fund it's coming from.
The funding is not to exceed the $99,695. If you recall, when Director Leonardson had indicated that he had negotiated a slightly lesser amount, but my recommendation was to leave it at the original amount, just in case there were some contingencies we had not anticipated. And it would be coming from the sewer fund.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Councilmember Spicer?
Yes.
French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item D, request approval resolution number 2017-38, a resolution to establish a historic district study committee.
So moved.
So is there a motion? Is there a second?
Support.
Moved and seconded. Well, Manager Mitchell?
Mayor and council, as part of the comprehensive plan, one of the recommendations was to explore the designation of other communities or neighborhoods within Albion as historic districts. It can be an economic tool with some incentives and tax breaks associated with it. So the first step in that process would be to appoint an advisory committee to determine if that would be something that would be beneficial to certain neighborhoods within Albion, and if so, where. And the planning commission has made a recommendation relative to individuals who have identified that they would be interested and willing to serve on that advisory committee. They're included in your packet.
So we'll establish and then, I guess, approve them, I guess, the individuals, because the, the one thing I was thinking about, if we're establishing the committee, then usually we have a process for people to, you know, apply. So, and I think I wouldn't have any issues with the people who volunteer, but I think that might be helpful just to, you know, stay within the, I guess, form that we use. Councilmember French?
Thank you. I think what I interpreted this is that, given that we've had difficulty in the past with populating committees, that this is just a list of folks who stepped up, I would presume they would apply through the normal expected application process.
Okay.
Be vetted by yourself and.
They are going to get a prior.
By council, right?
Yeah. I just wanted to make, I was just, I wanted to make sure that we're just, we're just approving.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay, thank you.
Are there any other? Councilmember French?
I just have a question. I thought our downtown already was a historic district?
Yes.
So this is just an expansion of, to go looking at other parts of our city to see if, from an economic or historical perspective, we can declare.
Exactly.
Fantastic. I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Any further discussion from council? Okay. Seeing none, we will proceed with the roll call vote.
Councilmember French?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Lawler?
Yes.
Spicer?
Yes.
And Mayor Brown?
Yes. Item E, discussion nuisance property litigation.
So, right now we've got three properties that we're litigating. The first one is 1521 North Eaton, which is the Ponderosa Building. That one, which has been an ongoing problem for the city, surprisingly, we were contacted by the owner's attorney. They've agreed to demolish the property. It's been a little bit slow going, but they did send me a copy of the permit, their, their application for permit for demolition. I'm just waiting for them to tell me when that has been approved and they're going to demo it. I expect it to be done, if not this month, the beginning of next month. So that building should be down. No cost to the city in demoing it, so that should happen very shortly. The next one is 702 North Albion. That one, we obtained a default judgment against the property owner. They haven't, they've either failed or refused to take action in response to that judgment. So we've sent it for what's called a show cause hearing to see why they shouldn't be held in contempt of court. That's set for September 25th of this month. I'll report back to you after we have that hearing. The last one is 608 Austin Avenue. We also obtained a default judgment on that property. Ms. Elster from my office actually did the show cause hearing on that late this past month. The court did hold the homeowner in contempt. The court has ordered $1,000 in legal fees to be paid to the city and has authorized a bench warrant for the homeowner's arrest. The difficulty there is the homeowner currently resides in the state of Hawaii, so we're in the process of obtaining the information for the bench warrant. But that's, that should be active this month. So, any questions?
The one, Councilmember Brown?
I've talked to a family member. She's no longer in Hawaii. She had relocated, and I forgot which country she, but I can get it. No, seriously, I, I.
Are you sure? Because we just served her down in Hawaii with, with, with the show cause motion last month.
Okay, well, I'm gonna be official. The family resident that I stopped and talked to said, Junior, she has left Hawaii. I'll go check after I leave the meeting, to be sure.
Okay. Because I mean, I did have, I had a process of her personally serving in Hawaii, so.
You know y'all think we all look alike.
Reese.
Any, any questions?
It's not appropriate. So the one question, so obviously the, the Eaton Street property is big.
Right.
But the other, I guess the other, in the other cases, in terms of funding for that, you know, if we do that, like what's the?
The way that the judgments are worded are that either they need to demo it themselves or they need to advance the city to the cost. The 608 Austin is going to be the trickier one if the, if the homeowner is still residing on the state, which is why we ask for a bench warrant, such that if they return to the state, we can, we can have them incarcerated until they comply. The 702 Albion property, I'm more optimistic about the homeowner resides in Kent County.
Okay.
So that will be a little bit easier to have enforcement action taken on that one.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. This is not related to these three properties that the attorney was speaking on, but can you quickly remind me what was the status of the Burger King building property? Or my Burger King property?
I wish John were here tonight, because he would be able to, there was, that was one of the properties that he had sent me for review. And off the top of my head, I can't tell you why we didn't move forward on it. It had something to do with, I think, the status of the entity that owned it precluded us moving forward at that time. I can't remember, I, I want to say that the entity that owned it might be in a bankruptcy proceeding. And if that's the case, most bankruptcy proceedings have automatic stays, meaning we can't do litigation.
Mayor, if I might, if I recall, on that particular property, there was actually
Some interest.
negotiation relative to a purchase and redevelopment. I, I think that may have not been consummated. So we're back at the drawing board on that particular property.
But there was, and aside from that, I had a conversation with our planning director, that there was something that precluded us, and it's escaping me right now. that there was something that precluded us, and it's escaping me right now, from litigating that property.
What, can find out from...
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you.
Are there any other, any other discussion from council on this? I think we're not taking action on this. Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Item F, discussion, I should say Google G Suite, but I bring this before council, recommended that we discuss it kind of initially, because one of the things that I've noticed, I don't know if other council people have noticed, is sometimes, you know, attachments are hard to open, depending on, you know, what you're using, and I know that a lot of larger entities, including the college, actually use Gmail as the primary technology for email and also get access to some of the document sharing capabilities of, that Google has. So, if you kind of inform us of any kind of findings, I know there's a little, something in the memo, but...
Yeah, I had an initial conversation with the representative from the Google organization, and there were some concerns that staff had identified, and some of it's related to the transition and the ability to interact with some of our existing programs such as BSA. They were indicating that may not be a major obstacle to overcome. They did indicate that the user rate is twenty-five dollars per user, and we have fifty, and we're maxing out right now at that fifty, so that's about fifteen thousand a year. And I guess my question to all of you is what are the tools that you really need? And then trying to find out what the best solution is. And if it's shared documents in the cloud, we can probably accommodate that with the technology we have access to now. So, it's just really understanding what is it you want and then determining what the fit is, instead of trying to find the fit and then forcing ourselves into it.
Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Dr. Mitchell, I think the thing that affects me the most, I think, is when I get emails and I cannot open the attachments, and I don't know if that's a Google, if that's because of the system we're using now, but a lot of times, the attachments are not accessible when they're first sent through email. So, that's for me, that's...
Councilmember French and Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you. I think one of the things that we struggle with, with technology, is the different devices that we all own personally that we are using to access documents. And so, if you don't have a good PDF reader, if you're using a tablet or a phone as your principal technology device, and a six megabyte or six gigabyte file that has a hundred pages of stuff that we get for our council meetings becomes impossibly large to open. So, by having Google Docs, then that shares the file, you don't actually have to download it because you're accessing a cloud-based system rather than receiving an email with a very big file. That said, I think that there are ways that you can certainly work around those sorts of issues. And so, I think I'm in agreement a little bit with our city manager about, you know, let's identify the difficulty. If we have difficulty opening files, then maybe we need to have the technology people at the city work with individual council people on what they have on their computer or their device to see if there's an easy solution and an expensive solution, rather than saying, let's go to a Google. I mean, I use Google Suite, so I'm a fan of it. I use it all the time. I use the word processing, the Excel version, the presentation version, free, easy to learn, and so you could see some savings in the very long term. But if we've already bought all that stuff as a city, then we're adding expense that we don't necessarily need to. So, maybe it's a survey of the technology we're all using that can find the issues with the problem, rather than sort of like, as our manager said, you know, top-downing it and then making, and then making everybody learn things. I had not thought of, when I initially supported this, and I'm sort of mixed-minded on how I feel, but I had not thought about the accounting software that Tom uses. I hadn't thought about what a public safety might use in terms of their documents, in terms of security. And so, while Google tells us it shouldn't be an issue, the transition could be long and painful. And so, I think at the very least, more research has to be done before we take action. But I think a technology survey for all of us is the first thing.
Councilmember Spicer?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say that I have had some issues, minor, in accessing some of the documents that have been shared, but when they, when I had notified city manager or whoever sent it, that I wasn't able to access, that they would then send it in a different format, different file, and I had no problem, you know, at that point. So, yeah, I think my, I had issues, but they've been resolved by just sending it in a different version, so.
Oh. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I agree with that. Once I contact Dr. Mitchell, she does resend it in a format that I'm able to access. I have trouble, whether it's on my cell phone, whether it's on my home computer, and I have a good PDF reader at home. So, if somebody wants to come in and look at my home computer and spray my technology, that's fine. But, yeah, that's where I am.
I think one of the, as mentioned about kind of the rationale, the rationale is, I guess, a couple of things. I mean, one is the initial question of security. I know we had a very, I guess, informal, very short discussion about, a discussion of like servers, so, you know, maybe this is a kind of a conversation to launch into a general kind of audit of the systems that we use. But, you know, I know that there were, there were some security issues that took place this year, and so that was kind of concerning. But I do like the idea of having access to, you know, files, to, you know, to, you know, ways to edit software. I know there's times when, actually, just last council meeting, there was a resolution that we passed that I had asked for, the last special meeting, excuse me, had asked for edits to resolution, and I know that when what was sent back to me, when it came through, it, you know, it was missing the actual red line, and, you know, I think that's just because of some compatibility issues, but it would be great if that level of collaboration could be increased through technology. So, I think really, there's a, there's a concern about security, there's a concern about access to information and documents, there's a benefit in increasing collaboration. And then I think the other thing, I know that, and I'm curious about this, maybe some we can check back on, is it à la carte? Do we have to go with the entire, all the offerings? Or could it be, could it be kind of separated by? Because at the very, at the very least, I think the Google email thing would be beneficial. I would prefer if we, if we could have Google Drive, you know, that, if I had to kind of list them in order of importance, I'd say like, you know, the email would be important, the access to documents through Drive. Now, whether or not we want to do the documents, Google Docs, that's something we can look into, because I know we probably currently use some version of Microsoft Office, but I don't know, do we, have we bought the license for that and just keep using, or is that, are we paying a subscription fee?
I believe it's a subscription, but I'd have to confirm that.
Okay.
One of the things we can even experiment with as we're investigating is there is a OneDrive available through Microsoft, and perhaps if we ask the clerk for the next packet, at least for the council members, to try to send it out using that and see if that aids in your ability to open attachments.
Okay. Yeah, because I, and this is just from memory, I know that, I can't remember, maybe with Windows twenty sixteen dot four, maybe they have like, or should say Office, but they do have that, there's kind of a, either a subscription way to do it, or you actually just buy it and own it, so. But I'd like to, if you can, check back with Google and see, you know, what services have to be put together, what can be broken out, and then maybe like a list of, you know, what we're currently using, because like you said, we know about BSNA software, and I'm sure that's optimized for Windows and, you know, Microsoft-related products, so...
The elections have technology, they have security requirements as well.
Okay.
One of the questions was relative to compartmentalizing some aspects of it. The representative that I spoke with said it's basically all or nothing, so it wasn't, as though you could do one portion of it, you'd have to do it enterprise-wide and all components, so...
And I'll say this too, because another thing is, I'm, and this has been since I've been on the council, the Barracuda software, the filter, that is very difficult to use and very clunky, and so I think that was another, you know, reason why I was looking at Google, because I know they're very good. I use it for my personal email, and it's very good at kind of, you know, filtering things out, so. But, yeah, if we could, I guess, have more information and then, because I know they do educational institutions, I know there's just larger cities, I just don't know if they've done smaller cities, but... Councilmember French?
I think that we've got a couple of different questions we can ask about this process and project, if you will. The first is, what I hear people saying is we want to be able to wait to share documents, and Google Drive does that. Microsoft Office has a shared document, but everybody has to have Microsoft Office. So, if everybody does, then we can use Microsoft's product that we have a license for to share agendas and things as Word documents. If you use Google Drive for Microsoft Office documents, it's just like Dropbox or any other sort of file sharing. You can't actually edit it. You have to download it to your computer, edit it, and put it back, which is a bit kludgy, right? So, but if everyone in the staff wants to continue with Microsoft, that is level one sort of collaboration, which I would not be opposed to. I think it's, the idea of, are there other ways that we can share files? And I think that that's as simple as someone at the city hall, the clerk perhaps, creating a drive folder and then sharing that with all of our Google Mail addresses. The problem, of course, is we all need to have Google Mail addresses. Many of us already do, but that then gets to the public versus private email and FOIA and all those sorts of issues. So, I think that that's, I think what I'm hearing our mayor say would sort of prevent that. We'd have separate email accounts that we would log into and have access to those files. But I think if we've got a solution already, I've heard no one on council say, after a phone conversation with our clerk or city manager, that we have difficulty downloading files. So, I think we've fixed the problem that we've had, and so I'm trying to figure out that, I think I'm suggesting that we don't need to move quickly on this, because we've solved the problems that we've had that this conversation was started about, aside from the Barracuda issue and the email issue, so...
Yeah, and so, and what I'm saying, what I'm suggesting is that we actually just get a little bit more information formalized...
Right.
About options and what we're doing and the current status, because like I said, there was, it's not the same thing, but it's connected in terms of, you know, the server security issue, so it took place, so...
Mayor, I can offer one other comment.
Yeah.
Just relative to access to technology that allows for more flexibility, there is a chip software that also addresses some of the current concerns that you're expressing. They tend to be in the two to ten thousand a year range, but the clerk and I had looked into that a year ago, and it was a little bit costly, but if we're looking at fifteen thousand versus something lesser than that, it may be worth exploring as well.
And the, I guess, the other thing, kind of hop on that, the other thing I was thinking about is archiving of documents and things like that? So, I know, I know at one point, this may have been with the previous council, there was discussion about, you know, what do we do, you know, the scans or old documents and then, but the issue is that if, if we are doing that, are we saving it to our servers? Are we, like, do we know what's happening, or is it...
It goes to our drives, our servers, and they also backed up daily by IT right.
Okay. And that, again, that was the other thing with Google, because I think they have like, I'm forgetting how, it's ninety-nine point something uptime, you know? So, I think that was something I was thinking about, is just if something just catastrophic happened, it would be, you know, safe, because I think the, I guess, the magnitude of their technology could kind of preserve that. But, yeah, okay, I appreciate the discussion, and then, like I said, if we could just get maybe like a formal memo on this with kind of more, you know, the numbers, it'd be appreciated, so... Okay. Item G, discussion black footprint of Albion.
That's an item I actually put on the agenda. I put it on there, the black footprint of Albion, as a sustainability of the people. This is not directed toward bigotry, it's not directed toward racism or anything like that. I recognize that when I visit Chicago, we go to Jew Town to buy different type of clothing and items. When I go to Detroit, I go to Greed Town, and in Grand Rapids, I attend different ethnic festivals, and I recognize that the different people of different colors who relate to each other do relate to people of their color and in their backgrounds. It's about culture, heritage, and ethnicity. And in Albion right now, I'm truly not seeing that, you know? I hang out at a chicken house, we are in driveway late at night, and sometimes I think we may be disturbing the neighborhood, drinking on loud, and I'm like, we need to have someplace to go. So, I'm not going to go by the one, two, three, four under discussion, I'm going to start off with the Albion Malibu site. I talked with Krista today, she just happened to be coming out of our family fair. I was so busy, I wasn't able to get to the email, I had a neighborhood watch meeting. So, anyway, I talked with her, and I said, I think that the Malibu iron site, the council should approach the government through its EDC to clean it up first. We should be trying to find any manufacturing site to come in and look at. We should clean it up and have it ready to go. And she agreed, and she mentioned the two-hundred-thousand-dollar assessment grant that we have for the properties throughout Catlin County. And I said, yeah, that's great that we're going to make the assessment, but I want to see that we directly pinpoint that we're going to clean it up and we're going to make a desire. And I'm on board with her and she's on board with me. This property is in the land bank, and for me to keep the sustainability of the people, we need a manufacturing plant. When the Malibu was there, the Malibu intentionally went to Florida to bring people up to work due to the war, et cetera, et cetera. And in their planning, they made sure that there was some residency. I'll get to that later. But right now, I think we need to have a manufacturing plant there, because you're always going to have some people who are not going to college, who don't want to go to college, and we need vocational skills, and you can man people with Jewish college and less education. That's my statement on the Malibu site. Next, I want to move to that. Austin Avenue Business District, specifically the six-hundred block. We discussed earlier about the resolution to establish a historic district. This is truly a historic district in the Black Neighborhood. That's where my mother, the rest of my relatives, that's where they went to congregate. Back in the day, Mr. Union, he owned the cleaners. Julia Patterson, my aunt had a barber shop. Eddie B. had a lounge, that's his niece that we're trying to get the property from right now, probably in Hawaii. We also had Atkins Lounge there. We had Mrs. Gamble, who had a restaurant on Austin and Albion there. Kerrigan Grocery Store was there and had all of the cultural foods that we bought, and Tisco Gas Station Grocery Store was there, and it was a very viable business district. And it was a very viable business district. Right now, it looks like a ghost town. I, I'm really trying to establish residency, employment, education, and a criminal justice system of diversion for the juveniles and the youth in, in that area. Because sustainability is the way of the future to make sure that we can keep it going. That's where I'm moving into the Albion Housing Commission. We had the HUD application and we, Cheryl and I met with these officials, with housing officials there. So I wanted to have new housing units such as in Chicago and Detroit. I wanted to see Crow School torn down, so we can move over there with the first transition and keep the cycle going. However, as I reported before on page 14 of the HUD application, our federal government is allowing privatization into some of the percentages of the, the public housing. And when that happens, it is not public anymore, because capitalism come in and you can take the rates up. People who can't afford it, it'll be, be less people who can't get on that road. And the ones who can't afford it has to, will have to find other housing, which is difficult. That situation is going on in Grand Rapids right now. So I, I don't want these people displaced, and I don't want that to go through right now. So I'm asking that our council and our citizens contact the federal government and Congress, because in five years, it's projected that privatization will happen in public housing. And that's where the capitalism and private investment will come. That makes the housing no longer affordable to many subsidized residents. They will be forced to relocate, they will be forced to pay more for residency, and that will be tough. Within that residency, I'm concerned that we here in Albion do not have retirement residency. We do not have a retirement community in any type of development. We're losing our seniors and we're losing our seniors to that tax base. I think that we need this council and our EDC to start looking forward to that planning with our planning commission. That we need some senior citizen development centers here. Now I want to move into Double Vision. Double Vision is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization. They need activity in the building to retain its current status. It needs collaboration with the city to its financial base to achieve code structure of the building. At some point in time, this council will have to take a look at the situation with Double Vision and its 501(c)(3) because of a lack of activity in that building. But I, Maurice Barnes, will not vote to, or against that organization if I don't feel that I, Maurice Barnes, as a councilman, has done as much as I can to help them. I recognize no municipal money from the city can go toward that, that cause. However, I was contacted concerning the opportunity school. $10,000 worth of computers were damaged. I was also contacted concerning Holland Park, that the basketball lights in this historic situation had been damaged. And it hurt me to my heart that I was the bus driver for some of these kids to Battle Creek to play basketball. So we canceled a game or two to try to show them that, that's, that's not the way to go. And what's much deeper, these are my neighbors. Less than 24 feet from my door, some of these children live that I, I deal with. So my thinking was that these children are at risk. These children are left behind from other programs that have upward mobility. And as I said, Double Vision has certification courses approved and designed to help these children. We must remove our personalities, as well as Double Vision, come together and agree to disagree and strive towards servicing the children who need attention and character building. I have seen the books in a, in a capacity with Double Vision when they were on our superior. I have seen information from whether they got money from the Philographic Women and other organizations. The money can be accounted for. I respect and understand there will be some ambiguous thoughts. I define ambiguous as not clear, unsure and trepidation. I define trepidation as anxiety, by some concerning prior actions by all involved with Double Vision. However, it's about sustainability for all in Albion. I think that the city of Albion, through its city manager and the assistant city manager, can do something in kind. In kind could come from whatever the city manager decided to do. If it's just one hour out of the week where the assistant city manager can search the web and see what type of grants that they're eligible. There are other things far as marketing, there are other things far as collaboration. If they needed the, the, the city buses from our Recreation Department Transport to you, we could work with them. We, we do have a policy and procedure for that. From what I am experiencing, the day I, I, I'm not gonna cry, I hauled some stuff from a storage shed. There were a bunch of toys, and I said, hey, we're not gonna throw these toys, we're gonna put them in the projects yard. They're outside my yard. And just before I came to this meeting, the kids hadn't touched them. And a couple of kids went by and said, you guys can have them. And they went and got them toys, and it brought joy to me, not because I did it. There's a need and Double Vision, based on their certification, that diversion programs with the criminal justice system of Calhoun County are juveniles and youth. They should have the opportunity to reach. And I'm not gonna sit by knowing that this city and this city council has knowledge that if they don't get that building up and running, that we will have to make a decision on their taxes and their nonprofit license. That's our, that, that's our situation because of the municipality. So therefore, I'm just asking, I'm not asking any debate. You don't have to make any statements on any of these items that I brought if you don't want. I just thought that they should come to table for consideration and thought, whether that thought's tonight or later. I just want to be able to say, I brought it to the table for communication. And yes, we've all made mistakes. I don't think that Double Vision, in the strategic location that they have, between city hall and a public safety building, should not be addressed. If Junior Barnes can address the negativity of them not being the code yet, or them not being up and running, Junior Barnes should try to move towards a solution as a city councilman in the precinct with these brothers. Thank you.
Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Being the treasurer of Double Vision, I would like to just add to the discussion and make it known that you may or may not see any activity coming in or out of that building, but Double Vision does exist. It does, does, it does programs. We do programs out in the community. I have expressed two fundraisers that we're doing as of the 16th. And like I said, we do go into the different housings, as far as Oak Meadows, the Housing Commission, and anywhere else that we may set up in and do things with the children. So I just would like to add that to, and make it known to the public.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. In response to Councilmember Barnes, I, his, his discussion, I agree with a lot of it. I look at the things that are going on downtown. And the hotel is nice, the brewery is nice, the bome is nice. But when I think of priorities that the people in the city of Albion need, I think jobs, I think healthcare and equitable education. Those are my top three. I, I personally would like to see priority placed in other areas of the city. I agree with your, your assessment of a manufacturing faci- facility. I, I think that's important to have, we need, we need that here. I met with Double Vision over the weekend, and I just want to say, I support your vision. The whole public housing and privatiz- private, privatization? I do worry about that. So I, I do encourage all of us to contact your leaders and, and, and ask that they do not support privatizing public housing, because it's going to displace the most vulnerable part of the communities. So yeah, I think basically the points I want to drive home is that I, I, I love what's happening downtown. I would love to see that all over Albion. And I would love to see Albion residents' priorities met with, with some urgency. And yeah, I support a lot of what you said, Councilmember Barnes.
Okay. We'll move forward. Final item here, discussion of delinquent trash bills.
This was the request from Councilmember Lawler.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. I had received a phone call from a resident in my precinct that was concerned about garbage not being picked up or service being discontinued in their, it was their neighbors. So it was really affecting his property when people come out to look at his property. They thought his property was nice, but they didn't really like the garbage that was around his property. He has stepped up twice to help these two properties, but he expressed to me that he could not keep doing it for them. And I did agree with him. It was made known that there were 140-plus non-compliant residents that had not been compliant with their garbage service. So he expressed to me that he wanted to know if, how are we enforcing this? Has there been any letters sent out to the residents? And if the time passes for the residents to do something about it? Had it been, had letters been sent out to the property owner to try and help deal with the problems? They also expressed to me that we do have, we, we did pass a, pass a, a grant for community police enforcement. And he was wanting to know if those particular two extra police officers could kind of collaborate with John Tracy to help enforce the city codes. He's aware that police enforcement does enforce parking on the grass, inoperable vehicles. And just wanted to know if they could help John Tracy in some kind of way with these problems. And if, if people are not able to pay their bill, I know that we can't, the city doesn't have funds to help that. But if there is an agency out there, could it be ma- made known to the property owner or the resident that lives there that there is help?
Oh, Councilmember Reed.
I'd just like to know, if the person who is living at the property is not paying the bill, but they are renting the property, do it then go to the person who owns the property to see to it that the bill is paid?
It, al- ultimately, it's always the, it's the landlord, the owner of the property is responsible. It's, I think, similar to other.
I have the same problem in my precinct, too.
Yeah. So to kind of follow on what Councilmember Lawler was saying, I think there's kind of this two, possibly connected with two different, two di- two different kind of issues. One is the delinquent garbage, trash hauler issues. And then one is kind of the code enforcement thing. With the delinquent situation, we have sent out notices. And I know we've, how many, has the number gone up in terms of responses since?
There's been some positive responses in terms of payment, yes.
Okay. For, I guess, for, for those residents who don't respond, there's, the fee is gonna be assessed. But then also, is there a way it'll roll over into tax bills?
I don't believe that's currently.
Okay.
It's a court action.
Okay. Okay. And then in this situation, the gentleman you were, or the person, the person, the resident you're talking to, the, the property that they're maintaining is next to them, is it occupied or is it not? I mean, is there someone next to them?
The two properties that does, that discontinued their garbage service is occupied.
Ah. Okay. So that goes to. Yeah. But I see how you're saying the code enforcement issue there, too.
So I'm looking at it as if we're going through the steps as far as what the city can do. But in the meantime, what about, would there be a code enforcer that can come out there and give a ticket, clean this place up? Is somebody that can help you?
Well, one thing, so the, we did apply for the grant for the, the two community policing camps.
Right, we have had received the response.
Okay. Yeah. So we don't, we don't know whether or not we will have the two additional officers yet.
So.
But we can, that is something that we can have the code enforcement officer go out and look at, yeah.
If I might respond, in the particular situation that you're referring to, we have spoken with the citizen in our office on several occasions as well. And he actually made the problem worse by paying the bill. So they, the residents that he's referring to were not in the first delinquent notice that we received from Granger. So they didn't get the letter from the city manager advising them that they're subject to fines, because they're not delinquent. So they have to go through the next billing cycle and notification from Granger. So once that happens, then they'll get the notification. Once we receive that, and if it appears to be rental property, we will send it to the owner of record for them to be notified that they're subject to a ticket, which would be issued either by code enforcement, most likely, or by public safety, they're the ones who can. And then it goes to the court for remediation. So that system is in place and it is occurring.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Maybe, I, I'm not sure I'm understanding. So there are two residents that are not paying their trash. So there, so there's trash out in the visible trash out?
I haven't been, I have rode by and saw it myself, yes.
So it sounds to me that there, there's a delinquent trash bill issue, but there's also a, if there's visible trash out, is that not a code enforcement issue?
Now, I've, I don't know if it's in regards to the trash. I do know that John and the inspector have been out to those properties on more than one occasion. Although I don't think it was necessarily trash that occurred, but there were issues with those properties. So they have been in communications with those residents relative to having it rectified. Now, if there's an ongoing issue in regards to the weekly trash pickup and it's overflowing, that one in particular hadn't been brought to my attention.
Councilmember Barnes.
I stopped the truck driver today at Chapin King in Broadwell. The neighbor had an old pool, so I actually did need some help. And he used the term credit, sometimes they have a credit balance. And he says, sometimes I'll pick it up, sometimes I'm not. We give them room that they may forgot the bill. So therefore, I think I've been talking to Jill today, there may be 111 on the roll that are behind right now.
Like it's closer to 180.
Okay, 180, but Granger is trying to work with them. They're not using the term vacancy, but they are picking it up sometimes when it comes in slightly and coming into the water. I've talked to them personally, though they are trying to work with the residents from that end. I just want to share that.
There any other questions? Move on to city manager. Move on to city manager report.
Mayor and council, um, at the August twenty-first meeting, you asked me to respond to a number of concerns that were expressed in public comment by residents. One in regards to the Washington Gardner Building, um, we have been in talks with the Albion College, which owns that building relative to the most appropriate rezoning for that, um, that particular building. So those are underway. There was a question in regards to the bag on the fire hydrant and Department of Public Services was working on the repair of that. Director Linderson's on vacation, so I haven't been able to confirm if that's been completed, but that wasn't being addressed as well. Um, there was a question in regards to street repairs and prioritization. And I just wanted to share with you a compilation of the information broken out by precinct in year relative to, um, the work that has been done in various precincts. And that's over a million dollars for precinct one, um, one point five for precinct two, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand precinct three, precinct four, eight hundred and fifty thousand, precinct five, eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, and precinct six, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And part of the challenge, as you know, in regards to the levy that we have for street repairs, even though the amount of the mileage has remained the same, the amount that the dollars that are generated has declined each year over the past ten years. So that makes it challenging to get the work that we need to get done. So we're always looking at, um, other partnerships or whatever we can do or grant funding. Uh, we recently applied for, we did not receive a grant in trying to get, um, Irwin Street redone. So we're always looking for resources, but it remains challenging. But the approval of the street improvement project always comes through for council for your approval. So if there's a priority within your precinct, that would be the time to identify that perhaps street A is more critical than street B.
Councilmember French.
I think a more valuable number, and not wanting to put too much work on your plate, uh, City Manager Mitchell, but, um, precinct six, um, you first look at the total dollars and you go, what the heck? But reality is, is that the precincts are all different sizes. And so it might be useful to know the number of miles in each precinct, just so we know. You know, because I think in fact, I look at my precinct and the state of its roads, and aside from Linden Avenue and Allen Place, two dead-end streets in my precinct, the roads in my precinct are in pretty good shape. So it would not be necessarily, unless I could entertain a, a desire to renovate Linden and Allen Place, which are not likely, but I'll advocate for them. But recognize that there are parts of our city that, and precincts in our city that are far more miles than precinct six. And so, uh, I think that would be a useful number, right? So if, if precinct six or precinct five, um, eight hundred, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars spent, but we've only got, say, ten miles of roads and precinct two, which might have thirty miles of roads, you know, then, then the spending, the idea of how we spend our resources is better known. So, but I will also compliment, uh, Councilman Reed for her advocacy for precinct two.
Yes, because precinct two, as I was told when I took, came into precinct two, had been neglected for some time because nobody ever pushed the fact that things needed to be done. And so when I got it and there was so much that needed to be done, we just started trying to get some things done, which made this as high as it is. Because for a long time it was neglected.
Thank you. Okay. Sorry.
Okay. In regards to the sidewalks, there was a ten-year special assessment that, um, was instituted in two thousand and eight. So we're, this is the final year of that assessment. So the council will need to make a determination on how you want to proceed with sidewalk repair, if it's going to be assessment or if it's going to be, um, more based on a smaller area, based on the actual work that needs to be done. But we will need to have that conversation soon in preparation for the two thousand and eighteen budget. There was a, a concern relative to the board of review, just in terms of generalities. There is an opportunity for individuals to appeal that process and, um, they're given thirty-five days from that date. And I think the deadline was August seventeenth that they chose to appeal the decision of the board of review.
And I should say that the, the manager and I discussed that and we're gonna be following up with, uh, you know, a, a meeting with the assessor and the board of review members to kind of clarify some, uh, some things. So that, that is in the works.
And, um, I'm very pleased to let you know that our Vista team members offered a great deal of assistance in a Consumers Energy tree plant- planting grant. We applied for some trees to go along the Albion River Trail. So hopefully we'll get a response from that in the coming month. Um, one of the goals you had set for me, um, as city manager, was to try to identify some resources relative to the I ninety-four, um, exchange at Eaton Street. I had a men- a meeting with the MDOT representatives and they did identify that there were perhaps some opportunities relative to the TAP gateway grants as well as, um, MDOT has some economic development funding tools available if you're going to retain or attract jobs. So we'll be following up with them in regards to that and possibly the signage could, um, be leveraged with the wayfinding initiative that's already underway to help, um, people to find their way through into Albion. On the bridge funding, um, one of the funding mechanisms that was brought to our attention, especially as we're looking at Albion Street and the Haven Street Bridge, is a critical bridge fund through the state. It's a competitive grant, so that means it can be very challenging to get enough points in order to get awarded, but we will, we'll look into that. And I want to thank everyone for their participation and support of the annual employees picnic. That was a great time by everyone. And of course, um, Councilmember Lind Reed for her fantastic cook. She cooked so much food, she forgot to take some of it out of the refrigerator. And Attorney Harkness for your support as well, um, in granting of the employees the afternoon off so they could all enjoy that, um, that afternoon. So it was a great time held by everyone and it was a, a good day. The community cleanup recycling day, the council approved up to two thousand for the electronic recycling and we did receive the invoice for one thousand seven hundred and eighty, so it was less than the two thousand that you had approved. Gave you an update on the Granger notices. So the Granger notices have been sent to my attention relative to those who have had a termination and their service for non-payment. The letters have gone out advising people that they had ten days to, um, get the service reinstituted or they would be subjected to fines. The next step would be for, um, the enforcement officer or police officer to go out and ticket those individuals for non-compliance and, um, then it would go to court. Representative Isan had requested to, um, have his in-district office hours here in City Hall. So he's looking at the third Friday of each month, starting in September, on the fifteenth, from nine AM to ten AM. And I sent you an email today, um, reminding you of the upcoming festival of the forks and the opportunity to pay them both the morning and the afternoon parades. So if you can get back to either me or Jill and let me know if you have not already, if you can participate.
Par- parade route, the parade route.
The last I heard was that it's starting at Victory Park and coming north up to Superior Street and probably turning at, I would think.
Oh, God. Okay, did you say? Councilmember Barnes.
I'd like to make a couple of comments on the city manager report for our sidewalks and streets.
Oh, wait. Are you done?
Wait, are you done? No, I'll wait.
I have one more, but it could wait until you're done.
Oh, go ahead. Please, go ahead.
Oh, I wanted to remind you, you need to do my annual review.
Yes.
So, um, we can work on the dates for.
Yeah. Councilmember Barnes.
I would like to comment on the streets and, uh, the sidewalks. I've been here seven years as precinct one, uh, councilman. And it's a tough situation when we all get together to try to decide what we're gonna do. Politics has come and played concerning precinct one. Again, I'm gonna state, I left a meeting in the basement with the mayor, the city manager and the, um, streets director. And I was told the one, first, second, and third, hard, well, those streets would be done. When I got back to the meeting, um, the fix was in, as far as I'm concerned. So therefore, I'm saying I still have streets in precinct one that have never been repaid since the very first paving. So I'm still advocating that we get those done. You can use monetary value any way you want. I call that semantics, six wrong way, half doesn't know. If that road is done complete, correct, and on time, and has a need, and it is serving the purpose that it was designed for, that's what's important to me. Thank you.
Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to comment on the, um, the board of review from the, um, city manager's comment. There was a previous issue where someone thought they were being, um, the board of review was being biased. So I'm just asking that, um, by the information that you provided us with today, if, does this include if a person feel like they're being, um,
So I, what, what else?
Not paid attention to or anything like that? Is, is this saying that they have thirty-five days to contact someone if they feel like they've been neglected or?
If I could offer something like that, the board of, the city council approves the guidelines where someone can ask for hardship exemption. So there should not be any variance from those guidelines. So what the mayor has asked for is for himself and me and the assessor and the members of the board of review to sit down to make certain everyone understands that indeed is the rules and that's how they're being applied.
So if they feel like still something different, you, would you recommend they have proof to say, I applied for this and didn't get it?
Yes.
This person applied for the same thing and they got it?
That would be very helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spicer.
Just, um, thank you, Mayor. Clarification with regard to, to the festival. Are we, we're being asked to participate in walking, riding?
Both options are available to you.
Ride please?
True, true. We'll talk about it. Are there any other, uh, I guess, comments on the manager's report? No other questions? Okay. Future agenda items, uh, city manager evaluation? I'm sorry.
No, I, during my interruption, I had, I mean, um, the state, um, amended the minor in possession of alcohol law that takes effect January one eighteen. So we're gonna need to amend our city ordinance, not necessarily the next meeting, but to make sure that it's in place before January one, maybe the first or second meeting in October. We're just gonna have to update our ordinance to, to comply with state law. They have, um, decriminalized it.
Okay. Thank you.
So if a minor?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So if a minor is in possession, it's not, no longer a crime or?
The way that the law is set up right now is that a first offense is a criminal, if it's a non-jailable criminal offense, a second offense, if there's a probation violation, it's thirty days. If there's a third offense, probation violation is sixty days. The way that the, the new law is written, that takes effect January one, a first offense is now not criminal at all. It's a civil infraction. Second offense, um, with a violation is thirty days, sixty days, and so forth. Um, the, the good, I mean, there's, I, it's overall, I, I don't think it was a good idea, but, um, they have modified the law such that prior offenses, um, include other violations, like if somebody has, uh, a drunk driving, even though they don't have another MIP, that counts as a prior, prior offense. And I'll go through all of that with you when, when I bring the ordinance, but I just wanted you to be aware, we're gonna have to address that before the end of the year.
Thank you.
Okay. So, city manager evaluation, so we want to get that done in September. And I want to give council enough time to, uh, to resp- you know, to fill out the form appropriately. So we're meeting today, the next meeting's the eighteenth. There's a work session on the twenty-fifth.
To Monday.
So, okay, so what, so what I'm, I'm thinking, I at least want to give everyone two weeks. So I'm thinking maybe the twenty-sixth, seventh, or eighth. If we, if the, if we can get them out this week. Councilmember French.
It is now the fifth. I remember at least once in the last seven years where our then-mayor, Joe Domingo, mailed us the evaluations of city managers. And we mailed them back or delivered them to City Hall in between council meetings. So if you were to assemble the assessment and mail it to us this week, we could then mail back the responses the week of the eleventh sometime. And that would give you time before the eighteenth to report. And we could have a special executive session on the eighteenth at that council meeting and do this in two weeks. I have public safety officers who.
Do you want to start with my self-evaluation?
Most definitely.
Well, that's the thing, is, is that?
I could get that to you by the eleventh at the latest, most likely this weekend, so.
So what I'm, what I'm thinking, cause there's a couple of things going on, is that, is the festival weekend there? And so if we get it out, well, yeah, because we can't get it out until we have that. We're not, I'm saying, the manager just said that she has it at least till the eighteenth, the eleventh.
Right.
Potentially to get it out. So, um, let's say I get that and that's put together, we're talking about.
Yeah, but you can mail out the evaluation keys the day after.
Yeah, but I don't think we can fill it out until we've had the manager's response.
Right, so she gets it to us on the eleventh, you mail it to us on the twelfth?
Okay. Or we'll probably not mail, probably have to have it delivered.
Mayor, what date were you looking at?
Yeah, that's, that's.
And please consider everybody's schedule.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying, I'm trying to give at least, cause you have, put it, put it, let's put it in perspective. The attorney, um, evaluation, the form is shorter and there's, you know, there's less there. So the manager's actually almost like twice that length. And so I want to make sure that everyone has, yeah, so, um, yeah. Yes, so what I'm thinking, the eleventh? I think it needs to be either, like I said, the, the twenty-sixth, seventh, or eighth. Because there's, like I said, there's the, there's the council meeting on the eighteenth, but then there's a work session on the twenty-fifth, study session, excuse me.
So? Why couldn't we do it the week of the eighteenth?
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. The week of the twenties, I know the twenty-eighth, there's a meeting already scheduled with, um, Coach Milton Barnes. So that night would probably be a conflict, um, for me at least. The twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh is.
Well, I guess, what, basically, I'm trying to give everyone two weeks.
Time.
So they, so that, you know, they have time to do that. Councilmember Barnes.
I'm writing with French.
The twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, Mayor, looks good for me.
Okay. We can, um, yeah, I think the twenty-sixth would be fine with me.
September twenty-sixth.
We can send out a dual, okay. Councilmember Lawler, anybody?
It, I, it doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Okay. So I'm just gonna suggest the twenty-sixth unless there's a, a verdict disagreement, okay? Yeah. And we'll just do a, I guess, make that a special meeting.
Tuesday the twenty-sixth instead of the twenty-fifth?
At seven o'clock.
Yep. Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, seven PM, special council meeting.
Why not the twenty-fifth?
There's a work session, a study session.
It's gonna be executive session after a work session.
It's a charter.
Oh, it's the charter work session?
Yeah.
So we're looking at the twenty-sixth now, Kelly, let's go.
The twenty-sixth at seven.
Okay. So we'll go with the twen- Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Are we, I'm sorry, I'm moving on to another future agenda item. Okay.
Was there? Okay. Councilmember. Okay, Councilmember, Councilmember Brown, what's the other, what's the?
The, uh, 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 sorry. Darampo update, um, what, what are the next steps? Um, are, is the county land bank going to, um, transfer possession to the city? Like, what's going on with that? Can we?
That's what I'm anticipating. Um, the treasurer has had some health challenges. So, things have been a little bit slow coming out of their office.
If, if at all possible, could you reach out to see if there's anything new? If not, that's, oh, gotcha. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell.
Okay, are there any other future agenda items? Okay, seeing that we will, everyone's here, uh, we'll proceed to public comment. So, person's addressing the council. She'll limit their coun, the comments to no more than three minutes. We ask that you give your name and address, and this is the time, so just, once he's, uh,
Thank you, Mayor. Wayne Arnold, nine oh six Hall Street. First of all, uh, I just probably, I'd like to piggyback on what Councilman Barnes and, uh, uh, Ms. Brown's, uh, outlook, uh, on the city. I think, uh, I think y'all should definitely pursue that, 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 that direction. And, uh, Councilmember Lawler, according to the, the National Maintenance Code, um, the, the police department is their job. If the, uh, if the code enforcement officer need their help, if he can't get it done, getting that area cleaned up, then that's the policeman's job. The, 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 accompany him and get that taken care of. So, we don't have to beg the police to, to do their job. But, but, uh, but, uh, according to the, uh, all due respect to Ms. Mitchell, according to the, uh, the, uh, the review board, um, if a person, um, have a complaint with the review board, um, according to the, uh, state, uh, state tribut, is it tribunal, um, they have to bring their concerns to the board of review. So, the board of review don't meet again until December. So, the concerns, the concerns about, uh, uh, the review not, not functioning the way it should be, I think that is a big concern. A, 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 and, and, and so, I think we shouldn't be kicking the can down the road here. Just like, yeah, I know that it's guidelines, and, and so, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm residing from the guidelines. So, yeah, uh, it is, it is a big concern. And I, I think the integrity of that is, is at stake here. And this shouldn't be kicked down the road. Because here's the thing, are we gonna wait till December before we tell the senior citizens, taxpayers of Albion? What, what we intend, what, uh, the city intends to do, uh, about the, uh, uh, about the fairness on the, uh, review board? So, uh, do we wait till December? Do we wait till December to bring it in for the review board? Because in order for, in order for, um, appeal to be made, at first, you gotta bring it to the review board. In other words, you gotta confront them with that. So, if they're doing something inadequate, they need to be confronted. If not, just see if it's true, you know? Cause, you know, just see if it's true. So, if this is going on, that's first of all, make sure that we let the citizens know that we are looking into this. Because, uh, you know, that's, remember, we do got sixty percent senior citizens here. And most of the property taxes is paid by the senior citizens. So, and then, you're not gonna have too many young people going in for the board of review for property tax because there are too many of them own property. So, we, we, we looking at senior citizens here. And I'm, you know, I, I'm, I'm waiting, and maybe the citizens is waiting, but I, I'm not gonna keep on putting, this is something that's way more important to just keep kicking the can down the road. Let's deal with this. Uh, Mayor, I, I do applaud, you said that you was gonna meet with the review board, and, and that's fine. Find out if I'm just blowing smoke out my mouth, or if this is actually something that's really true. Because if it is, it's of utterest importance that we deal with this right away. Because how many, how many senior citizens, yeah, I know we're gonna be pushing, how many senior citizens have, uh, have not got their taxes assessed correctly? Because you got people kicking and choosing who they let go and who they don't. Uh, I agree with Ms. Mitchell, yet the guidelines has been set out that you shouldn't deter from that. And what I'm saying is, they did deter from that. So, I mean, I know that social issues is just gonna, you know, I know that social issues sometimes is pretty difficult. And you know, we, we, we wanna kind of sweep them under the rug sometimes. But let's just deal with the issues as they come. Get them out the way and let's move on. Because what's gonna happen is, it's gonna come back and re-manifest itself. And so, we're gonna have to deal with it later on. So, let's deal with it now. Get it out the way. Find out if I'm telling the truth, and let's, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Polly Wilson, and I live at six oh six West Erie Street in Albion. My complaint is, y'all tearing down a lot of houses around here. I could use something. I called over there at Marshall, they says against the rule. Next thing I look, it's all gone. Windows is gone. I can use that. I'm on social security. All my life, I have done without, but Lord has blessed me. I raised my children, but I didn't learn to save. So, in the meantime, I'm right where I'm at, I'm being honest. Y'all tearing things down that I can use. And I just don't understand why you call Mr. Tracy, it's against the rule. What's wrong with a nice door that someone can use? Why is it such a stigma on flattening it? And you gotta go to try to spend money at Habitat to try to get something with just all around town being tore down to the ground? And my next question, I hate to publicize this, it bothers my soul. And it's epidemic here in Albion, and that is these bedbugs. Nobody wanna talk about them, but they are here. They are here. Young people, I talked to several people, they don't wanna talk about them because they are ashamed of them. They even say they don't wanna get put out of their homes. So, it should be something addressed where these people should be able to get some kind of income. Nobody wanna talk about it. And when it get hit under the rug, it gets bigger and it gets bigger. That's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Howe, two thirteen West Erie Street. I'm one of them that got hit with the non-payment to Granger. I've been trying to cancel them from the day one. When they first dropped off my cans, I don't want their service. I don't need their service. We share our trash and have, ever since I've lived in that house, which has been five years now, with her, my wife's nephew or uncle that lives out in the country. Two-person family, we're a two-person family. I don't generate enough trash, they don't generate enough trash. So, we take our trash out to their place out in the country. Now, I'm told I have to take this service. I have to take the yard service. I compost my yard, everything about it. I have a garden in the back. Everything goes into my garden or into a compost pile. I'm trying to find out, is there any waivers, any way out of this? Because I don't need it.
So, I, I understand your concern. I think what, what, what's happened for a long time in the city is, there's been a longstanding ordinance that you, that if, you know, if you're a resident, you're residing in the community, you have to have, uh, a refuge hauler. And I think that what's, what's happened is kind of what, what you've described. People have done that, they've gone without. They found ways just not to, to do that. Um, so, the, the enforcement of that ordinance is really, um, it's always been there. It's just now that we, we found a way to having everyone on the single hauler basically reduces the cost.
I understand it reduces the cost. Cost has never been an issue for me. Okay, I, I'm retired military, I can afford it, I'm working, I got plenty of income, that's not the issue. There, it is an issue, I'm sure, for some elderly people.
Could you, could you ha, so, you, you, the, the family you referenced, um, I guess outside the city, do they pay for garbage?
Yes.
Could, could they just?
And we share the cost.
Could they bring their garbage to you?
That's not the issue, but the bottom line is, 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 I've never used it.
Well.
And the seniors, I mean, how many seniors have their, used to share it with their children?
Yeah.
Or whatever, a neighbor. And now, all of a sudden, they have the added expense.
I think, I think, like I said, I, my, what I would say is that, that's been the ordinance probably practically forever. And, um, in, in, we were basically kind of, uh, addressing multiple issues, which was reducing price and then, you know, helping with compliance, so.
I understand that, but the state only requires that it be handled, okay? The city has developed the ordinance to enforce that more or less. And what I'm asking basically is, are there any exceptions to it? Is there a way to apply for an exception?
No exception.
Unfortunately not, yeah.
So, this is kind of being forced down people's throats, whether they want or not, and then you turn around and act
So.
Like you're extorting people to pay their bill by hitting them with a fifty-dollar-a-day fine if they don't pay their bill.
You know, like I said, I, I understand, like I said, I wanna, you know, usually I, I try not to respond to public comment, but I think your, your, your comment.
All right, thank you. That's, I just.
Okay, thank you.
Marcus Trammell, seven oh seven North Marion Street. Um, I'm coming about the trash issue as well. And, um, I actually spoke to Ms. Lawler last week. Uh, she referenced, um, she referenced, uh, some of the issues that I've been having ongoing. I live here part-time, stay here in Albion part-time, had a property here for quite a while. Um, and it's become, you know, a problem, and that is, uh, folks basically not disposing of the garbage, putting it in the backyard, piling it on the porch, back of the house. I've worked with them, helped secure a dumpster. We, I've been here multiple times, you've heard the story. It's been about a year I've been dealing with this now. Uh, cleaned the area up, helped to get the payment back, helped to get all utilities caught back up. So, folks, uh, could get their utilities back on in these homes. And, you know, have worked and tried to do everything I can to help folks get ahead and be able to, to solve this issue. Um, and we're back with, uh, folks not having trash service again, open garbage being exposed on the curb. And so, my real question to come forward is, is that I know with the issue that was brought forward now, I know other folks in the community that live next to their family, they've shared trash service for years because they've got, you know, you know, one or two people living in a home, they don't generate that much trash. I've heard that complaint, uh, from others saying now we're being forced to take this. I, you know, I know this is a complicated issue. There are truly instances where folks have not had trash service for a long time and have been disposing of it by sharing service or by having some means of getting rid of it. But there are also folks, when I, last week, when this, they failed to pick up the trash, I went and spoke with the Granger driver, and I talked to Granger, called the company. You know, I was told that there were a hundred and forty at the time, possibly more now, that are delinquent. Um, this is something that, you know, I know you passed an ordinance just about a year ago. I've been down here at City Hall talking about it a couple of times. My int, my, my goal is not to try to get people fined inordinate amounts of money. The goal is the fact that there has to be some sort of enforcement, especially when you have neighbors taking the initiative, try to come up, clean up their neighborhood. I wanna make sure that the council stays the course on trying to figure out how to solve this issue. Cause it's a real issue. It's a real issue for folks. Um, I know I'm probably not the only one having this experience. I've heard complaints from others, obviously. People not disposing garbage, dogs getting into it, raccoons getting into it, spreading it. I've regularly went out with gloves on. I keep a pair by my front door and go out, and I pick up dirty diapers and other things from in the yard on the street that have been drug out by animals because this garbage is not being disposed of properly. It's just a certain community standard. You know, the garb, the cost of the trash service costs about just over three dollars a week. Okay, um, now, that is, um, you know, it comes at under two hundred dollars a year or something. Now, that's not an insignificant amount for some, I understand that. I understand that, you know, we may need to figure out how to help those that can't pay it, try to look at these other issues. But at some level, there has to be consistent enforcement. I've spoke with the city manager's office. You know, I was, um, explained to that they have a process that they're pursuing, sending out letters, the enforcement. But it's gonna require the council to have the backbone to keep pushing on this issue and trying to solve this problem, period. It's a problem that we're gonna have to solve if we're gonna raise the quality of life in our neighborhoods and basically honor the folks that have tried their best to make Albion a wonderful place to live. And this issue goes back to a larger issue, we'll go into it. But these houses that the garbage is piling up are houses that should have been taken care of when they went vacant and empty in two thousand and eight. And they were put back on the market and sold at the time when they could, definitely could not have been meeting the code issues, um, and be an appropriate place to live. They were sold for a few thousand dollars and have since been passed to folks for very, you know, for very little money, and no one's making any investment home. So, it's a real issue. I, I, I have decided I'm gonna spend as much time as I have to. Now that it's cooled down a little bit in the spring, I guess I could even go door-to-door and stay here in Michigan uh, until, you know, we talk to enough folks to have the will to actually try to solve the issue. Because I think it's, it's a, it's an appropriate thing for a city to concern itself with. And so, that's it, but I, I wanna, I wanna say, I'm speaking out on it because I don't believe that I'm the only one uh, that's had this issue. Um, and the fact of the matter is, is that I've received myself threats of violence, in fact, some today, for raising these very issues from some of these folks. So, there's some basic lawlessness going on in some of these areas, and folks are afraid to confront it uh, because they've been threatened. And I've been physically threatened a couple of times now. I've talked to code enforcement, got response. But it takes the will and the risk to actually go out and do it. So, anything the council can do to stand by citizens that have these issues and really follow through and make sure that the city administration addresses it in the most appropriate way, uh, I support. And I'm gonna continue to talk with folks in order to build support for that because I know ultimately, you guys have to deal with the, the complaints that come in about the enforcement. Those are, you know, there's issues there too. And so, there needs to be citizens that are willing to stand behind the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lonnie Brewer, twelve hundred Hillside Road. This is our ten-year anniversary for our organization. Uh, we've been open, uh, for ten years, and I'm proud of that. What we doing, we doing, uh, I'm gonna collaborate what y'all already, already said, pretty much. Uh, we doing this fundraiser we doing with the Skate Bash. Uh, we trying to raise money for Double Vision Center. Okay, the thing about this situation is that, um, we've been doing this, uh, every year. Every single year since we've been up and running. It's nothing new. Uh, it ain't like I haven't been hitting, I've been hitting out anywhere. I've been letting everybody, everybody know what we've been doing. We've been doing like, uh, in front of our building, we do like a little bash thing when kids come out. And it been pretty successful too. Everything on the festival floor, we come out every year, we set up, we sell books, you know, sell a little food. We do this every single year. Everybody that know about Double Vision know we do this every year. But for some reason, people continue to say we're not active or we're not doing anything in the community. And that kinda throw me off because we, we haven't went anywhere, our building right downtown. When we was at the other building, um, we set up every single year and sold food, uh, gave away toys, clothes, canned goods. We did this every year. So, we're saying all of that. Only thing I wanna do is just get everybody involved in what we're trying to do. Because like I said before, um, we got a community center that we trying to cater to the youth that we feel that been neglected. There's a lot of kids in Albion is not taking advantage of those programs that's here because they can't afford it. And then, and then, at the same time, the parent is not involved with those kids. So, what we trying to do, we trying to take up where the parent is not doing by having, by providing a place for, for those kids to come out and do some things. So, my, what I'm asking you guys to do, just like anything else, you rally around, um, help us help those kids. Because you're not helping me because I'm, I'm doing good. My twin and I, we do perfect by ourselves. But it's not about us though. It's about our kids. It's about the kids that been neglected, ignored. And I, I sit here and watch a lot of, uh, kids get awards. I see, I watch kids, like twenty kids participate in a program, but I was, I only see two kids get awarded. See, through our program, I wanna award all those kids. If you can hang through the whole program, the whole section, I want all those kids to get awarded. You know, even if another child doing something maybe even greater or even going to school, okay, it's a time and place to give that child award. But, uh, you know, cater to all those kids. Because it's, it's hard to see a kid standing up there that didn't anticipate, that went through the whole program and turn around and see some other child get awarded for it, you know? Double Vision don't like stuff like that. That's no reason why we became a non-profit in the first place because there's a lot of kids feel left out. And what they do, they drop out the program because they feel like drop out the program, because they feel like they're not a part of it. So what we trying to do is make every child a part of something and not feel left out. And we have all these programs that we offer. Everything me and my twin did, we earned this, we worked our butt off to get our nonprofit, we worked our butt off to get certified, ain't nobody did nothing for Double Vision and that we did for self, we did everything for ourself. The money we invested into that building, we put sixty thousand dollar worth of material and work into our building. No city of Albion didn't give us that money, it came out of our fund. Then people had the audacity to tell us, uh, oh, oh, you guys ain't doing any side of the building. Everybody knows that building was a mess, when we, when we got that building. Everybody know how bad that building was. It was, uh, uh, maroon coming up out of the floor, the water coming in, I mean, the building was terrible. Go inside that building, you think a lucky con did that? Double Vision did that. All that hard work we put in for somebody that don't know nothing about Double Vision, they ain't trying to find out what our organization about, trying to speak on, what we, uh, what we committed to, or what we not doing, then to tell us go into another facility, to tell us, go into another facility, working in the facility, after we done invest all our money and time into our own facility.
Thank you.
And, and I'm gonna say one thing, and I'm getting, I'm see, the only thing I'm saying this is, let's help our kids, and take it serious, the kids that being neglected. I, I, I appreciate when I seen that award, when all the parents got up and they walked and clap for the kids to come back to hearing the school, let's do that every day for our kids.
Thank you.
What you got, one more, Double Vision? Donny Brewer, nine nineteen North Clinton Street, check this out. Any one of y'all can tell me, what do these young people got somewhere to go? Do anybody know, beside church? Is there anywhere they can have fun, enjoy themselves? I wanna know, because there's no place. So I got a like eighteen, nineteen-year-old come to my house all the time, wanted like asking us, what was y'all gonna do, what we gonna get the center, when you gonna do it? I've talked to the city, because y'all the one neglecting them, not us. You know, y'all can laugh at us all day long, but I sleep good at night, do you? I mean, cause like I said, we doing what we doing, I mean, we doing this for my heart, we ain't doing this for no photo shot, we doing it because we love our kids here. If y'all don't love y'all kids, that's on y'all, but that's what we do. So, we hoping y'all step up, wake up, and stop putting money in everything else except y'all young people and our kids, because we ain't here for the heck of it, we here because we care about our kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Okay. Uh, seeing no... Okay.
My name's Dennis Tomlin, I live on three thirteen Irwin Avenue. Uh, my wife and I recently moved here, relatively, about two years ago, and so, I haven't been as active as I wanted to with the city council, but unfortunately, you guys are gonna get to know me a little bit more, I'll be here as much as I can. I, I wanted to talk about the trash ordinance. When we first moved here two years ago, we, uh, obtained Granger trash service, and we had no problems with them, we paid more than we're paying now. So with this new ordinance, it, it's a sound economic policy, or idea, we do have a discount now, we pay significantly less, but as you touched on earlier, uh, there are people who don't need this service, or would rather not ha-, pay for this service, and, uh, from my experience, when you force somebody to do things that they're not interested in doing, uh, such as paying for a service they don't need out of their own pocket, that only builds resentment, and it's not gonna get their cooperation. I, I had this all played out in my head, what I was gonna say, I apologize. I'm, the, hope to hear you guys talk about more options for people, like he said, he doesn't require the service. You say the ordinance has been in effect since, as far as you know, well, there's no reason that it can't change, and I ask that you, you guys talk on that, touch on that, and accommodate the citizens of this city a lot more. Uh, we do have a large root, that hundred and forty or two hundred-plus people who are refusing to pay or neglecting to pay it, or paying only portions of it. Uh, we're working together, and we would rather not have to force you guys to, uh, get rid of the ordinance, we would hope that you guys would work for the best interest of everybody to solve the issue. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Attorney Harkness?
Um, since there've been a lot of comments tonight about the, uh, the single hauler and the delin-, trash delinquency, I wanted, you know, members of council have asked questions over the past year or so, and I thought it was important, that the public understand that a lot of questions have been posed relating to, um, the ordinance. I mean, first, it's important to note that the current ordinance only modifies an old ordinance, there's been an old ordinance on the books that everybody in the city has to have trash service for decades. I mean, so it's not something new, it's just a twist on something that was already existing. Now, some of the issues that have come forth are that, uh, making it a single trash hauler in the city violates the commerce clauses, that it's a monopoly, that it's a tax. Um, this is not something that the city council or the city stumbled into blindly, there's over a hundred years of published case law that have, where people have litigated all of these issues, and the courts have consistently ruled in favor of the municipalities, that it is not a tax, that it does not restrain trade, that it's within the city's prerogative to regulate for health, safety, and welfare. So, I understand that the, the concerns of, of the citizens of the city, but I think it's important to also understand that all of these issues have been litigated by other municipalities, uh, city of Grand Rapids, township of Shelby, city of Manistee, and it's all been ruled in the fashion that the cities perceive. So, that being said, I just wanted the public to be aware of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Brown?
I totally respect Cullen in that legal situation, which is, uh, true and, and fact. However, there's still a morality to it, there's a democracy to it, it is legal, but for me, I feel the people in a democracy still should have choice, regardless of the legal situation, there's a moral situation also. I voted no, and I stand by, thank you.
Councilor Brown?
Motion to adjourn?
Oh, okay, well, I was going there. Um, seeing no further public comment, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second? Moved in second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.